Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Well County School District Six. Today is the 26th day of April 2021. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance Tour Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Ms. Green, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayley?
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Mr. Tally?
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Well, welcome again to the Board of Education meeting. We have a great agenda tonight. And one of those agenda items that I'm excited about is we're going to approve some AP curriculum tonight. That is not something that most people get excited about, but and oftentimes, most people don't make the connection as to why that's important. And again, I think I'm passionate about it because I don't often hear from people who are who are passionate about approving AP curriculum. And one of the things that I I think is or one of the things that is so important for this for this district is to we don't just provide education for individuals, but one of our one of our goals is to provide a workforce and for this community in in 10 years, in 20 years. And and that AP curriculum is so important for that. Again, one of the things I hear when people come to me and they they love what we're doing at, say, Central High School and the manufacturing pathway, and they say, yeah, we need more of that. And and they love the they love Jefferson and the construction pathway, and we we love that, and we need more of that. And we do, we're very proud of those programs. They do great, great things. But we also need some people, not not all of our students, but we need some of our students to go to college, because some of the jobs that we need in this community require a college degree. And that AP curriculum is so important for getting kids to college. I don't know if you know if you know this, but college tuition has risen 68% in this state in the last 10 years. The average college student now graduates with about $30,000 of debt in Colorado. And so what that AP curriculum does is it allows us to take some of that time, some of that cost away. So we're going to approve a few classes tonight. But let's say you have a freshman, and that freshman is enrolled in AP Human Geography and also AP Physics. That's one we're approving tonight. And then as a sophomore, they enroll in AP Chemistry and they enroll in AP Seminar. That's an that's an English class. And then as a junior, they enroll in AP US History and then enroll in AP Spanish. And as a senior, AP Calculus and AP Government. That's that's four classes. That is 24 college hours. That is a year of college. We've just cut the cost of of college and that student debt by 25%. And again, that might not sound like a big deal, but for a lot of our students, that is that is absolutely necessary, that that we continue to bring the cost of college and the cost of going to college down, because we don't just need people to go be engineers and architects and do those kind of things where you make 75 and 85 and $90,000 right out of right out of college. We need people to be nurses and social workers and and teachers, and those those salaries don't always start out at rarely ever start out at $75,000. And our community needs those. And one of my kids' science teacher says it best. He says, one day, I'm so passionate about education, because one day, one of those kids is going to be on the other side of a needle. We don't want to have a shortage of teachers, a shortage of social workers, a shortage of nurses. And so again, that's where that AP curriculum is so important, helping our kids get to college. And I'm so thankful for this community for passing that. MLO, it's it expires in a couple of years, so it's never too early to start saying, we need to pass that again, because our kids need these AP curriculums, among the other things that MLO provides. And that's all I have tonight. We'll get to that in a minute. We're now to the public participation regarding agenda items. And Ms. Green, I don't believe we have anybody. And so we will might hear from someone later in our work session or later in our meeting. We're now to our work session report. And Ms. Green, will you give us an update on what we've been doing for the last little bit?
Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members and then reviewed the calendar of upcoming events. Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources Annette Overton provided information about the late start proposal for the 2021-2022 school year. The board discussed community engagement and debriefed the work session to conclude.
Thank you, Ms. Green. We're now to our superintendent's report. So Dr. Pilch, I'll hand this over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews, and thank you for that huge shout out on the AP curriculum. I I second your remarks, and I too am excited about tonight's agenda, because as I go through the agenda, I see that we have lots of approvals and adoptions that will continue the district in moving forward, keep us on the positive trajectory we've been on now for several years, and and do the really big work we still have left to do here in the district. And we're only able to do that because the Board of Education will approve, most likely approve tonight, those expenditures that are mill levy override expenditures and bond measure expenditures. And and District Six continues to move ahead, because we've experienced the resources at the generosity of our community members who voted yes for both that mill levy override and that bond issue. So really excited. Again, just like you, I want to say thank you to our voters for supporting our public schools here in in the Greeley-Evan School District. Many of us got to be a part of the Greeley Central Parade on Saturday. So because they didn't get to have a homecoming parade, they decided to do a parade the weekend before their prom. So they held their homecoming parade and their homecoming pep rally, and it was really a lot of fun. A special treat for me was I got to ride in the car with Tracy Steinbrecher, who is the kitchen manager at Greeley Central High School, and she had been chosen as the the parade grand marshal. And so we got a lot of cheers along the parade route, because Tracy got a lot of cheers along the parade route. So that was a lot of fun to be a part of that. And then I'll just share that, as we discussed in our work session tonight, the district will move forward with a plan to do an hour late start on Mondays, beginning with next school year, preschool through well, preschool schedules on different schedules, so K through 12. We will do that, one hour late start on Monday mornings, giving back some professional development time to our teachers and giving back some planning time to our teachers. And as a result of that plan, there will be two additional instructional days in the calendar over what our students have had in the past. So just officially announcing, we're moving forward with that late start on Mondays for teacher work time and professional development time. Thank you, President Matthews.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. We're now to the portion of our meeting where we approve our agenda, and so we'll need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Green, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. We also need to approve our consent agenda for tonight, and we'll need a motion for this as well.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Green.
Mr. Hayley?
Opposed.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our next item is our Project Teacher Find recognition. And so before we go any further, Dr. Pilch, I will hand this to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. Well, you know, as we think about Innovation 2020 and moving into Innovation 2030, a big part, a significant part of our work is recruiting and retaining quality teacher candidates. And so we are especially honored tonight to be able to announce those folks from our very own district who will be going into education. So with that, I'm thinking, is this Mrs. Overton? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Good evening, President Matthews and members of the board. Dr. Pilch, I am pleased to present to you tonight our Project Teacher Find scholarship recipients. As you know, Project Teacher Find is a collaborative grow-your-own effort between UNC and District Six to identify and recruit promising teachers from high school students. The scholarship provides funding each year to future District Six teacher candidates. High school students are recommended by their counselors. Applications are screened by a scholarship committee, and that's led by Amy Spruce, our Director of Human Resources, who's here tonight. Thank you, Amy, for your work on that. It also has UNC faculty on the committee. Candidates must maintain at least a 2.75 GPA to be eligible for continued support. This evening, we are honored we're honoring four Project Teacher Find scholarship award winners. These students have worked hard throughout high school and will give just as much effort in college. We look forward to them shaping the lives of District Six students in the future. Please join me in honoring the following students. So the first one is Tina Brewer, and I would ask her to come up. Tina Brewer is a senior at University High School in Greeley. She will be attending the University of Northern Colorado in the fall of 2021, pursuing a bachelor's degree in mathematics, woo-hoo, with an emphasis on secondary education in order to become a high school teacher. Tina is currently a tutor, which has led her to believe that becoming a teacher will allow her to better help those students who are struggling. Tina has loved being a tutor, and she is excited to be able to accomplish this goal with the Project Teacher Fund support. All right, Tina, you would stand right over there. Thank you. Emma Douglas is next. Emma Douglas is currently a senior at Frontier Academy High School. She was born and raised in Greeley, Colorado, and plans to stay in Greeley to complete an elementary teaching career. She was a swimmer for eight years and now helps coach a swim team. Additionally, she is a sales associate at Bath &amp; Body Works and spends quite a bit of time volunteering throughout her community. Emma lives with her three younger sisters, mom and dad, and two adorable dogs. She has wanted to be a teacher for as long as she can remember, and she is so grateful to be granted this scholarship to help her pursue her dream. Thank you. Yvette Yakis. Yvette Yakis is a senior at Greeley West High School. She plans to attend the University of Northern Colorado this fall. Yvette looks forward to going to school to pursue a career in elementary education so that she may become a kindergarten teacher. She is on Greeley West High School Cheer Team and is also the International Baccalaureate Program and a member of National Honor Society. Yvette is open-minded and determined individual who strives to do her best. Julia Guerrero. Julia is a Colorado native and will be attending the University of Northern Colorado, majoring in elementary education with a focus on culturally and linguistically diverse education. Throughout high school, Julia excelled in the Teacher Cadet Program, where she immersed herself in the life of a teacher, building strong relationships with students. She has volunteered in community picnics, made arts and crafts, ran the Crab Ball Station, and at an elementary school carnival, she ran the Frog Toss Game. In her junior year of high school, Julia participated in the UNC Future Teacher Conference, where she witnessed the dedication and passion of teachers that teachers have to help their students succeed. These experiences have helped her decide that she wanted to become an elementary CLD teacher in order to provide that support that students need to motivate them to persevere in the faces of all challenges. Julia's future plans involve traveling to rural areas of Mexico to teach the English language and core subjects. This scholarship will allow her to pursue her dreams of teaching and helping others. President Matthews, I would ask you to invite you to come up and and present the certificates to our candidates. Can you all turn around and take a picture with the president? Thank you, ladies, for joining us this evening, and we wish you a great success as you continue your educational endeavors to shape the lives of future generations here in District Six and beyond. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Overton.
Thank you, Mrs. Overton, and congratulations again. Our next item is our Council of Student Representatives report. And and guys, I'll just let you know, if if you've already received an award and would like to exit the meeting at this time, you're welcome to do so. Dr. Pilch, I'll give this portion back to you.
Thank you, President Matthews, and I'm going to introduce Mr. Larry Green and Ms. Insoo, Dr. Insoo Olsen, who are here tonight. I think Mr. Green has students here who are going to present on behalf of the Council of Student Reps. Oh, we have a staff member who's going in. First introduce the students, yes.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having us. It is my pleasure and my honor tonight to bring forward Elasia Caturis. She is a junior at Jefferson High School, and she is an active member of our leadership program as well as the Prom Committee Chairman. She's not on our Student Council of Representatives, but to show what kind of leader she is, my young lady was not able to make it tonight, and she stepped in today. So her leadership is key in our building. We can always count on her. Her integrity is very high, and she is a key part of our building, so.
And Randy, will you introduce yourself, please? Before we bring the student up?
I am Randy Shaw. I'm a teacher at Jefferson High School. I'm one of the shortest teachers at Jefferson High School. So, Ms. Elasia, if you would come up.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jefferson is a unique place. Students from all over the county come to Jefferson for a wide variety of reasons. Those reasons are what make Jefferson so special, no matter who you are, where you come from, and what you're going through in life. You are always welcome at Jefferson. Every student in our school is required to take the Discovery Class. This class is where we are taught norms and the school culture during our school. During this class, we are taught the concept of synergy. Synergy is defined as the interaction of two or more organizations or agents working together to produce a combined effect greater than the sum of separate parts. Simply put, working together to achieve more than what we can do on our own. Students are staffed on a first-name basis to create an environment and culture of mutual respect and combined responsibility for the student's education. This concept and norms helps us to create better learning environments, overcoming challenges in life, and making changes in our community. As you can see, Jefferson is a place, as mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, very unique. Through the various programs Jefferson offers us as students, we learn current and relevant information. We have the Construction Program that helps us bring math to life, and we have chances to change our community and make differences to it as well. Discovery helps us learn our communication skills and problem-solving skills that we can utilize in our home, work, relationships, or even at work. We also have the 21st Century Program, where we can learn new concepts and that we can use to relate into learning in the classroom. Our learning is more than a book, pencil, and paper, or even a computer during this whole COVID mess. When you're at Jefferson High School, learning comes to life. It begins every morning with our hefe growling, "Good morning." And at the end of the day, when the teachers have to kick us out, we force us to go home from our after-school academic programs. I would like to end this presentation by recognizing all the teachers at Jefferson High School. They make a very difference in us every day, and we don't recognize them as much as we supposed to. I would also like to thank you, District Six School Board members, for the hard work you put in every day to make sure that our school stays open and for securing the great teachers and administration within our district. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. Oh, Dr. Olsen, come on. Oh.
Hi. Hi, I am Dr. Insoo Olsen. I'm the principal of Northridge High School, and I'm also the administrator liaison for this awesome student-led board sponsored by all of you. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I get to introduce Jennifer Castillo, sorry, Jennifer Castillo-Cortez. I want to point out that she is a junior and already a District Six success story, as she came to us from El Salvador in middle school and is now part of some of our major programs such as ROTC and STEM, and did a little dabbling in Avid as well, and challenging herself in honors and AP courses. So here's Jennifer to talk a little bit about her experience this year at Northridge.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Castillo and I'm a junior in Northridge High School. The 2020 spring semester was filled with many challenges, as all the schools across the country were forced to shut down and transition into online learning. This was difficult, because the teachers and students had to learn to navigate new platforms such as Schoology. I consider myself to be a hands-on learner. I focus better when I'm in the classroom, interacting with others, and I feel more confident in my learning when I'm able to ask questions when I don't understand something. However, being online made this very difficult, and asking questions became a task that I no longer wanted to do. And not being able to interact with others was really tough. As a result, I lost all my interest in school, and I lost the motivation I had left. And I found myself procrastinating very often and not paying attention in class. Luckily, I was blessed with amazing teachers, and they kept me in check and pushed me to keep going. They managed to motivate me when all motivation was lost. And I managed to finish my semester with a 4.0 GPA. As we end the 2020-2021 school year, we can now say that things are getting better, and we are now able to be in person four days a week and see our friends and our teachers in the classroom. We now have things to look forward to and to be excited about. I'm looking forward to becoming the senior, becoming a senior and becoming the Cadet Sergeant Major for the ROTC program at Northridge, and as well as being able to attend the JOTC Annual Leadership Camp up in YNC. And I'm also looking forward to completing my internship at UNC for the Frontiers of Science. And lastly, I just want to thank each and every one of you for putting in the hard work so that we can be back in school, following safety protocols, and so that everyone can stay in school, and students like me can't lose their motivation like I did. And so I just want to say thank you and keep up the hard work, and I hope that everything gets better.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next item of business are the revisions to de-fiscal management policies, and this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves the revisions to the de-fiscal management policies as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Is there any discussion? Well, before we have any discussion, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to to say about these? They look pretty pretty routine and just cleaning up some language, but is there anything else you would like to add?
Absolutely. Mostly just clean up, and then, of course, changes in legislation have resulted in this. I will tell you that much of what has changed in here are already practices that the district engages in, and so it's really codifying it and doing what we're being told to do by state law.
Sounds good. Any questions or discussion from board members? Not seeing any, Ms. Green, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our next item is a second read and repeal of policy KCA community engagement. And because this is a second read, we we need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six repeals policy KCA community engagement as presented.
Second.
Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say on on this one? We're just getting rid of some policies I think that that we don't need.
No, you're correct, and we spoke about it at last meeting.
Any discussion or questions from board members? Seeing none, Ms. Green, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our next item is a second read and repeal of policy LDA student teaching and internships. This is also an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six repeals policy LDA student teaching and internships as presented. Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, I won't even ask. Maybe I should. You're no, you're looking at me. I don't think there's anything we need to say on this one, but if there is, board members, any questions or comments? Ms. Green?
Mr. Hayley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our next item is the General Fund and MLO Advanced Placement Curriculum Adoption, and this is an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves the adoption of the Advanced Placement Curriculum. Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, I will give it to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. After your opening comments, I think we should just turn it back to you, actually.
I do what they say.
No, this is actually is very exciting that the mill levy override dollars have allowed us to come to this point where we're actually able to adopt new advanced placement curriculum. And we have Dr. Stacy Dattery, Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement, to present you with that proposal.
Thank you, Superintendent Pilch. President Matthews and members of the board, it is my pleasure to bring forward this recommendation for you this evening on our advanced placement courses. I am joined tonight by Mr. Dagan Andrews and Ms. Amanda Krieger, who have led this curriculum adoption work along with several committee members that I will introduce to you here in a couple of slides. So the resources being brought forward to you this evening for your consideration include AP Chemistry, AP Physics, AP Spanish Language and Culture, AP Seminar, and AP Research. They are inconsistent currently across all of our high schools, and then we have actually not had a formal adoption for these resources in about 12 years. And in that 12 years, the landscape of instruction has changed, as you know, and in order to really prepare our students for college and career readiness in the society that they have tomorrow, both traditional and digital components of curriculum resources are necessary. Therefore, we are asking the board for your approval this evening on these resources. So the purpose for these new textbooks and digital platforms are really threefold. First, it will provide updated resources students need to align with the new suite of online classroom supports, including unit guides and exam descriptions that College Board introduced for advanced placement courses in the 2019-2020 school year. Additionally, the College Board created the Advanced Placement Equity and Access Policy to promote equitable access to advanced placement courses and encourages the elimination of barriers that restrict access to traditionally underrepresented populations. District Six Advanced Placement classrooms strive to reflect the diversity of the overall student population and have worked to align with the College Board policy. And then finally, in order to meet the expectations... And then finally, in order to meet the expectations for the rigor of the AP courses, students do need explicit instruction that facilitates meaningful discourse by posing rich inquiry questions and promoting productive struggle. AP resources need to meet the needs of diverse groups of learners, utilizing problem-solving strategies and providing skill and strategy instruction that promotes students' understanding of their concepts, of these concepts. And all these criteria were considered by the AP Curriculum Adoption Committee during the curriculum review process so that the new resources would be aligned to the expectations of the College Board for these courses. The teachers and leaders who served on the AP Curriculum Adoption Committee deserve our deepest appreciation for their participation in this process. They are, they work hours and hours after school, um, to, to prepare and, and do really heavy, heavy work in terms of, um, figuring out what, what is in the resources and what are the best ones to adopt, um, for, for our district. So, this slide contains their names and the roles, the various roles that they have in our district. So, before I share with you the committee's recommendations, I'd just like to walk you through briefly the process and the timeline of their work during the initial meeting and on December 2nd. They started this just on December 2nd, and, uh, the committee spent time reviewing the AP Equity and Access Policy that I spoke of earlier, and the philosophy of access and equity for all students to rigorous courses. They also reviewed the Analyzing Instructional Materials, or what we call the AIM rubric, in detail and discussed the correlation of the rubrics specifically to the academic demands of an advanced placement course and the identified resources for review. In January, then, uh, Mr. Dagan Andrews presented to the committee on the difference between static, customizable, and flexible curriculum. And the committee then reviewed the AIM rubric line by line with that AP lens and began the review then of digital and physical materials utilizing the AIM process. In February, the committee utilized the AIM rubric as they reviewed resources, and then they tallied and looked at all of the results of their rubric ratings for the resources that would be, uh, brought forward for vendor presentations that were scheduled in March, and they typically brought two, no more than three of those resources forward for each of the different courses. On March 10th, the AP Curriculum Adoption Committee viewed vendor presentations for finalists in these different courses, and after the presentations, committee members engaged in dialogue to finalize their, their final AIM rubric rating. On March 31st, um, for all five of the courses, they reviewed their collective vision statement that they had created regarding ac, access and equity to AP. And in so doing, the committee then reviewed the updated AIM rubric ratings and finalized those recommendations that were brought forward to District Curriculum Council on April 15th. The District Curriculum Council and the AP Curriculum Adoption Committee recommended to move these resources forward to you this evening for your consideration. Utilizing the consensus process, the committee proposed the resources on this slide for adoption by each respective AP course. Each AP resource specifies whether that resource includes a physical textbook and/or a digital account for each student, so that is all included in this quote and in this recommendation for you this evening. And all teacher resources and the professional development to support teachers with these new resources are included with the resource source purchase at no additional cost. So, the recommendation of both the ProQuest and the JSTOR databases includes access to both databases for all students in the, in all of our comprehensive high schools, and it's not just for students in the AP Seminar and AP research. Uh, JSTOR is a humanities-heavy database, and ProQuest is actually a science-heavy database, and those are just additional supports. Providing both of these databases to all of our high school students promotes access and equity to the college-level research material across content areas for all students to, uh, students to, uh, have access to their, to the research needs. The total cost for all four AP textbooks, online resources, and the databases is $2,000, $204,401.30, and it is budgeted for in both general fund dollars as well as many, much of it coming from our MLO budget. We believe our process and the process that these folks have gone through has been rigorous, as evidenced by the materials in your board packet, and that they have chosen the most appropriate instructional resources for each of these advanced placement courses. These resources adhere to the criteria set forth by College Board to meet the rigorous expectations of advanced placement courses, and it does take into consideration the diversity of our learners. Without quality curricular resources, our teachers are left to supplement the curriculum with what they have or with what they can piece together, which is often time-consuming for them, and it can lower the cognitive demand on student learning. So, we believe our teachers and our students deserve these quality resources and the quality professional development that is a part of the adoption process. So, I appreciate you giving me some time this evening to present this work and this recommendation to you this evening, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. I bet we have a few questions for you, so, um, and I think Ms. Solis is first.
So, I don't have any questions. Like, again, I just want to thank everybody that works on this. I know it's a lot, um, and there's just so many times that we have thanked our community and seen what the MLO dollars really have done, and I hope the community continues to see their dollars at work and what a great job everyone is doing, and so, just a big thank you to community again for this. Um, the fact that we've gone so long without doing new curriculum, uh, is a concern, but it's so great that community stepped up and we're here now and we're making those changes and, and doing new curriculum. But make sure and thank your staff and everyone that worked on this. Thank you.
Ms. Mueller?
Yes, and could you refresh my memory, Dr. Dattery? When was the last time we adopted AP curriculum?
It was 12 years is what we, what we found, um, consistently for all of those different resources, depending on the course.
Okay, thank you for that. I do, I have to say thank you also to your committee because to be relevant in so many of these subjects, especially the sciences, requires that we have up-to-date materials. And so, um, to be competitive and using some of the same resources that are going to be used when these students get into college, um, I mean, these are college-level classes, but going on, they're already going to be familiar with JSTOR and, and ProQuest, and so that's really, really beneficial for our students to get a leg up into the world they're going to move into. So, I really appreciate the committee working on it. I know it takes a lot of hours to evaluate textbooks. Textbooks, textbooks aren't always the most engaging materials out there, and so, um, I'm really happy to see this moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Hayfley?
I'll be redundant. Thanks to you and your, your folks and to all of our MLO voters. You know, I, I have several comments and questions. You know, the equitable access, I think that people don't understand the importance of that. There was a time in, in District Six where AP and IB were exclusive as opposed to inclusive, and with the idea of Innovation 2020 and being both academically as well as career-ready, uh, this is really, really important. So, I'd like to thank all of our educators who have begun to embrace that, and I think Avid has been one of the programs that has really pushed it to the nth degree, and, and we need to be very, very excited about that. Now, I, I don't want to be nitpicking, but can you explain to me why we're only doing Spanish as an AP world language as opposed to some of the other languages that our students might be encountering as they move forward?
Absolutely. So, what I can tell you is that all of these courses are coming before you, but it's, it's when we, they are being redone at the AP College Board is when we are then, um, aligning our work to that. And so, all of those courses are being done. We brought a recommendation, and I'm losing track of the various ones from last year. We brought another one forward in December. This one's due in May. We will bring more forward. So, we're just keeping them all on a cycle, and they will all be coming before the board. Yes.
Then my next question is with the professional development. I know that AP, we send our educators to AP, uh, seminars to have them learn how to teach the AP classes. I'm sure it's changed over the course of time. Is this money budgeted, and will we be sending our teachers to have this opportunity?
So, for the resources themselves, we have training around the resources that'll happen on Curriculum Day, plus there are resort, or, excuse me, professional development built in to, within AP College Board just for the resources themselves and the supports for that. As far as AP Summer Institute, a teacher goes to that when they are teaching, and then they're, they're kept up on those, um, trainings and the, and the expectations within that course on a regular basis. So, it's just about timing around that. Those don't always coincide with when we get new resources. Not all of those teachers go to that summer training directly, but all of the teachers are involved in that training and keep up on that as a part of being an AP teacher.
Okay, then my last one. Um, I'm glad that we have new resources, 12-year-old books, and AP is not very viable, but are, are students either able to purchase them or do we have means to purchase books for all students to allow them to highlight and notate as they would if they were going off to take a college class? Uh, is that possible or not?
That has been some ongoing discussion that we've had, and I, I would say that has been, I'm sorry, ongoing discussion that we've had. Um, at this time, our students have not been purchasing those books, but that is certainly something that we can investigate further if that's, you know, the wishes and that's a direction we'd want to go in.
Thanks, Dr. Dattery. I, Mr. Hayfley asks this question every time we bring AP curriculum forward. So, thank you for being consistent, Mr. Hayfley. Thank you. And, and so I, though, actually have a different answer than I did the last time, which was if, if we're aware of a student who has that need and that request, we absolutely figure that out. But I think what we're finding now is so much of the materials are online that it's just a very different world from the highlight and annotate world, um, that those of us who were teaching a while ago remember.
Okay, then, then thank you for reminding me that I'm aging, and I appreciate all of your efforts.
Might, might I interject that, Mr. Hayfley, there are online, I mean, with the digital resources, you can actually highlight and annotate on, yes, in digitally. So, so it's amazing the tools that students have now. I'll show you at some time.
It's, it's all about learning every day, all of us.
Education doesn't take a holiday. I get it.
Mr. Tally?
Thank you for the information, and, um, I am not, uh, one that is familiar with AP courses. Um, so I have a question, and excuse my ignorance for this question. What is AP Seminar and what makes Seminar AP?
Well, that, I am actually, I, so that I don't misspeak, I'm going to actually ask Ms. Amanda Krieger. She oversees our AP, um, courses and, and for our district, and she can go a little more in-depth as to what those courses, what is entailed in those courses. So, Amanda, do you mind joining us? She does an amazing job, so... She's like, "Really?" It's AP Seminar.
Um, so AP Seminar is a course that is, in some ways, and these are my words, an introductory course to AP. So, for students who are needing just a little bit more depth in that reading and writing academically and aren't quite ready to maybe dive into AP Human Geography, um, AP Seminar prepares them and gets them ready so that as they're diving in, they can take another AP course and be successful. AP Seminar is also important because it's part of the AP Capstone Program, and so a student who passes AP Seminar and AP Research, and then AP Research differs in that a student chooses their own research project in multiple different areas, which is why the committee recommended both JSTOR and ProQuest being humanities and sciences so that a student wouldn't have to choose one or the other but could really dive into their areas of interest in AP Research. So, a student who takes both of those, passes those with a three or higher, and then takes another four AP courses, qualifies for the AP Capstone Diploma. So, it all works together to help keep students well-rounded and then pushing them as far as they can go in earning those college credits while still in high school.
Perfect. Thank you so much for answering that, and thank you all for, and to everyone for, uh, giving our students the opportunity to be super-successful after school, or after high school. I think that's amazing, and I can tell you firsthand, coming from a school with 230 kids, K through 12, we did not have AP, I didn't know what it was, and so, um, it's, it's amazing to see the great work that you're all doing here.
And if I can add to the answer or ask a question about that, um, we're one of the few districts that actually is able to offer AP Seminar, right? We're able to, just sort of piloting that maybe or, or something?
So, we are past the pilot phase in that, but we are one of the, um, districts who did take that on first and then moved forward with AP Seminar, AP Research, and then offering that AP Capstone Diploma. So, we're definitely paving the way.
Thank you. Just checking to see if there are any other questions from board members, um, as I'm waiting. Uh, I have one, so I, I understand the equity and access that, uh, that Mr. Hayfley was speaking of, and the importance of Avid in, in getting, uh, kids who, um, like Mr. Tally, I'm unfamiliar with AP, not because it wasn't offered, but because I never thought I could pass one of those classes. And, and I know we probably have quite a few students in a district like that that, uh, feel like, okay, I can't do that. And I know that Avid and we've worked to get students who might not believe they could pass those classes into those classes, but how does the curriculum, uh, how does equity and access, um, come into play when we're choosing a curriculum? Does that make sense?
Talk about the process that you went through with the AIM rubric.
Absolutely. So, part of the process when we're looking, and I'll refer back to the AIM rubric, which is the same consistent rubric AP uses that the rest of the district uses. And the idea really is that we dive in and make sure that any one of these resources that we choose, students can see themselves in that resource. So, our educators look at how the, how the narrative is framed. They look at what kind of pictures are in those textbooks so that as a student would go through, a student would find familiarity with those pieces. They also look in the AIM rubric, um, at how, what kinds of scaffolds are available to teachers so that they can provide that for students as well, and looking into the metacognition, how to dive deeper into that, and what outside resource, resources, um, the textbook is bringing in or referring to so that, again, that we're looking at a diverse resource that is thinking about all of our students, not just one group of students or another group of students. And then we come back to the AP Access and Equity Policy every time we meet together and renew that lens, as in, as we're looking at this, don't forget, we're looking for all of these things. We're not just looking at how, you know, how rigorous the text is, which is very important, but how rigorous the text is in a context that all students see themselves.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that explanation. Any other questions or comments from board members? I'm not seeing any, so, Ms. Green, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Yes, momentarily. Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Thank you, Dr. Dattery.
Thank you.
Our next item is also an MLO item, and it's Elementary Math Curriculum Adoption, another one that's near and dear to my heart. But, uh, we'll need a motion to proceed.
I move the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the adoption of the elementary math curriculum. Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, any introduction for this one?
I think Dr. Dattery needs no introduction, so we'll just let her take it away.
Well, thank you, Superintendent Pilch. And again, President Matthews and members of the board, this is, this is an exciting night for us, and I appreciate your words earlier, Ms. Solis, in recognizing our community because these two presentations would not be possible had it not been for our voters. Um, it has been over 10 years for our math adoption in elementary, and, um, so it is with the deepest appreciation, gratitude, and, um, just happiness to bring this proposal to you this evening. I am joined with, by, uh, folks again who really deserve the credit and recognition, just as Ms. Amanda Krieger. The depth of what they know and how they lead this work is incredible. And so, in addition to Amanda, I am joined, uh, for the math adoption, Ms. Tammy Hermans, our Elementary Curriculum Coordinator, Mr. Dagan Andrews, our Director of Curriculum, and Ms. Monica Williams joined us today. She is a teacher in our district, and she's really, many of them would have joined us tonight. I need you to know, many of our teachers wanted to come tonight, and with restrictions, we said, well, we'll have one of our teachers, but many of them are with us in, in spirit tonight as well. So, before I share with you, um, the resource recommendation, which we are excited about, I also, uh, want to share with you a little bit about the purpose and the why behind bringing this to you this evening and this particular resource to you this evening. So, in order to support our teachers to ensure high levels of math achievement by our students, as I said, it has been over 10 years since our last adoption. And as math instruction was evaluated across our district, much of the heavy lift was being done by our teachers, and students were not really given the opportunity to be sense-makers of mathematics. Students were not building their conceptual understanding to the depth of what they needed to and really knowing the why behind the algorithms in a way that would make them mathematically powerful. It is important for the resource to support our teachers in ways to provide rich tasks, um, differentiation- in ways to provide rich tasks, differentiation of learning, assessing and advancing the questions for them, and formative assessments to really know if they've learned what they need to know. Finally, there was a need for a resource that not only provides opportunities for academic discourse, but for that discourse to build students' mathematical understanding and elevate a community of mathematicians. So this slide outlines the list of elementary committee members. They have learned to get their shared ideas and evaluated resources to choose what they feel is the highest-quality resource to best meet the needs of all of our students in District Six. So before I share with you the recommendation, I'd like to just briefly walk you through the process and the timeline that this committee took for this curriculum adoption. So during the months of November and December, the committee shared their greatest hopes and their most pressing concerns regarding student learning in mathematics. They also created a common vision statement by looking at current research in mathematics instruction. They did a lot of study, a lot of studying during this time to really determine what was the, what are the aspects that they needed to have featured the most important things in a new curricular resource. So in January, then, the committee evaluated resources using the AIM rubric. And they revised the AIM rubric, much like the AP group committee members did, by really making sure that the components that they knew were most critical for mathematical, early mathematical learning, was reflected in the AIM rubric. And then they used that rubric and narrowed to the top three resources. They then planned for pilots using each of the resources so that they could compare and evaluate the support for teachers, the student experiences, and the tools that were available in each resource. During February, then, each teacher piloted those three resources. As the committee debriefed the pilots, it was determined that only two of the resources should actually move forward to presentations from publishers. And the committee members then revised their ratings on the AIM rubric to reflect any new information that they gained from the presentations. In March and April, the committee reviewed the ratings on the AIM rubric and saw that they very clearly reflected the strengths and the weaknesses presented by each of the final two resources. It was found that the teacher surveys matched some of the early ratings of the resources, but not what the committee had found as members dug deeper into the resources. Two members of the committee, along with the Director of Curriculum and Personalized Learning and the Elementary Curriculum Coordinator, met with teachers across the district to give them the opportunity to ask questions of the committee's findings and to provide further feedback. The meetings found that the teachers supported the committee's recommendations. So the recommendation from the Elementary Mathematics Adoption Committee is for illustrative mathematics published by LearnZillion. This recommendation was presented to the District Curriculum Council on April 13th, and then DCC has moved this recommendation forward to you this evening. As I mentioned, using the consensus process, the committee has proposed illustrative math from LearnZillion. Teachers on the adoption committee shared with me, I met with them in their final meeting before they took it to DCC as well, to learn about the resource and why they really were recommending this forward. And they shared with me that this resource was the most equitable resource, citing many examples of ensuring that all students had access to high-quality math tasks, including supports for students who are multilingual learners, as well as students with disabilities. And multiple examples of how the resources provides scaffolds within the resource, provides equity and equitable access to the learning tasks and that it isn't just in the learning side of it, but also in the assessment. So they felt very confident that it was doing something that very few other resources were providing, and certainly not our current resources. There are many teacher, students and teacher supports also that are built into the resource. And teachers shared that they believe this resource will optimize student learning far and above other resources that they examined. The total elementary cost is about $2,368,376, and that will purchase for kindergarten through fifth grades for seven years. And what that seven years does is it does both license for the digital aspect for that full seven years, as well as consumables. The students in elementary for math still certainly need written workbooks, so to speak. We call them consumables for that full year. And that locks in that pricing for us as well. So this will be funded as well, as I mentioned earlier, from the mill levy override, which, again, we cannot thank our voters enough for passing this much-needed funding. So thank you for your time, again, as I share with you this very important recommendation as well. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. Ms. Pappas?
So I too want to thank the committee for the math curriculum, as well as the AP curriculum. But I also want to point out to people that may not know just the consistency in the process that has been followed as we adopt curriculums over time. I mean, for me, it's very reassuring to know that you're looking at a rubric that stays the course and also has that intentional focus on the access and equity. So appreciate your work, appreciate the work of the committee, and of course, the voters for the MO. So thank you.
I'm not seeing any other, any other questions, Dr. Dattery. I bet someone is sitting at home, though, who's watched Incredibles 2, going, I don't know if you've not seen, you've not seen Incredibles 2, where the husband is helping, or the father's helping the kids with math. And he goes, why did they change math? And I'm sure somebody at home is saying, $2.3 million to change math? Did we really need to change math? Can you just, very briefly, just answer, answer that question? Why we needed to change math and why this curriculum is so important for our students?
Yes. Stacy, while you're getting your thoughts together on that, I'll just preface a little bit and say that our teachers and curriculum leaders, many of whom are in the room tonight, have been cobbling together materials and resources to address the way mathematics is taught today. And it's really a high focus on numeracy and math literacy, we would call it. And so it is very different. We have changed math. And as a result, children, you know, there was a time when it was okay to say, I'm not good at math, or I don't do math, right? That's not the case anymore. We expect every child to be a mathematician, to understand number sense and numeracy. And so with that, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Dattery, and you can talk about why it's so expensive to change math.
Right. And you just said that so well. And it almost brings tears to my eyes because, as you said, we don't want students to walk out our doors saying they're not good at math. And we know far too many kids have done that in the past. And that's not the reality that our students should face. You're right. I suppose in some ways you could say that math has changed. And at the same time, that's what math has always been about. But we haven't always had the resources in the hands of our teachers to help them to know how to do that for every single student. Because not all of our teachers were taught in a way, as Dr. Pilch just said, around being numerate, having mathematical fluency. And so this resource, while $2.3 million is, does seem like a lot, it is, one of the teachers actually said, and I wrote it down, because they just were so thankful that this was even coming forward to you all this evening. And they shared with me that the way that the lessons are structured supports the student to do the work and not the teacher. And I thought that was huge because all too often, the teachers have been doing such a lift, not only in preparing the lessons, but then trying to make sure that kids are having access in to those lessons. The rich academic discourse and the teacher provides the opportunity for teachers to teach and for students to be able to really engage in the learning. There is a smooth connection. One of the things that we've learned that was very important to our teachers, particularly this, knowing that they were thrust into this this last year, is the digital and consumable or the in-person learning. And there's this very smooth transition, they said, between that paper and digital. And that has also changed. If I think about something that's really changed, that has changed for our teachers and our students in ways that we never thought would. And this resource will meet that challenge and will really be able to provide the opportunity for students to have access, not because we want to teach at home and have remote learning. We kind of, we hope those days are behind us. But it does provide the opportunity for students to have access to these resources at home in a digital way and to really support their learning in ways that we haven't in the past. So it's really just helping our teachers in ways that, as you said, cobbling it together has been what they have known for so long in the past. Because we really have not been able to provide, have the funding sources to provide this kind of quality resource in quite some time. So it is well worth the investment. It's well worth the investment for our teachers and for our students so that they can really focus on the instruction and focus on the learning and not focus on trying to figure out how to create a lesson that is at the level of the standard expectation. So I hope that's helpful in addition to the words, Dr. Pilch.
Thank you both. Mr. Hayfley has a question.
No, I just, I appreciate Dr. Pilch and Dr. Dattery's comments. But I think one of the things, for years and years, it was always easy to say, I'm no good at math. And people accepted that. And I think during the course of the time, as things have changed with the emphasis of our educators, as well as administratively, it's no longer okay to say, I'm no good at math. And it's now, you need to begin thinking math and doing the numeracy that was discussed earlier. And I appreciate what occurs in our classrooms because I know it's incredibly hard, what they do. And they all deserve credit for doing a great job.
Yeah, and I will just echo the thanks. I wanted our public to hear that explanation. I'm well aware, my kids understand math, just understand the concepts, understand the why, as you said, behind it so much better than I ever did. And I'm so glad that our teachers now have a curriculum to support that because it's amazing that they have taught this for so long without those resources. And our kids in this district are doing incredible things in math and so proud of the work that we're doing. So thank you to your committee. We have another question, Ms. Solis.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I feel like it's really important to give a shout-out to the parents who have been doing school when, you know, we were closed in math. I saw so many things on Facebook about, I don't remember doing math like this. How do I help? So just, you know, kudos to the parents that have really worked with their kids. And we know it's not the math we learned, how we learned it, when we learned it, but that they kept with it. And, you know, they kept supporting their kids. And, you know, maybe the kids kind of taught them something too. But yes, math is definitely different. So just wanted to give a shout-out to the parents.
Thank you both.
Any other questions, comments from board members? Again, thank you, Dr. Dattery. Please do thank your team and that we know that those teachers that put this together, this is, this is time away from classroom, time away from greeting those curriculums, you know, extra hours, so thank them for us.
Thank you all.
Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item is our Boundary Changes Approval. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves the boundary change proposal as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, I will give it to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. So you all will notice in your board docs that there is a new attachment related to this presentation, that I think we were having some technical difficulties with our consultant who is out of state, but will be joining us by Zoom tonight. But we do now have the scenario attached. The scenario is attached there in a more simplified version than what you saw at the work session on Friday, the 16th, whatever day it was we met. So I wonder, President Matthews, if you want to go ahead and have Mr. Bingham just come on to our Zoom and launch into the presentation? Or would you like to give, take a short break and give the board members a chance to look at this? It's totally your call. There's really no substantial new information. It's just, we've narrowed it down to more condensed slides so you're not seeing the full presentation tonight that you saw in the work session. And then you do see in there a map that I know was a request of at least one of the board members to see an overlay of the new, the old boundaries compared to the new boundaries. And then finally, I'll just remind everyone that there's only one boundary change that will occur this future, this next August. And that is the shift from the, some students at Maplewood Elementary to Jackson Elementary School. But the rest of the boundaries do not shift until the new Toynton Academy K8 is open. And then the next wave is when Madison K, pre-K8 opens as well, which would allow us time to build some additions also at Martinez and Meker prior to shifting students to those schools. So with that, what is your pleasure, President Matthews?
Well, I know that the attachment is new, but the information is not. And it's about 85 degrees, I think, about right now. So I'm going to say, let's go forward unless somebody really wants to take some time to look this over. I hear nothing. Let's go ahead and get Mr. Bingham in.
So with that...
Oh, thanks, everybody. It's a privilege to be here. Would you like me to share my screen? Or would you like to look at your own material? I'll see something up.
Yes, Shannon, if you would please share your screen so the public can see that. That would be excellent. And again, I'm introducing to you Mr. Shannon Bingham, who we have worked with now for well over a year on demographic studies here in the Greeley-Evan's area.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Well, good evening, everyone. It's a privilege to be here. I have a kind of a shortened version of the presentation that you saw during the work session. We just completed really a successful stakeholder involvement process where we had virtual meetings with our faculties and with our parents who were involved in some of these proposed boundary changes. And what you're seeing here is a package of about 11 items that are supported by leadership and by the stakeholders via the survey. So we did collect the community survey and the majority of the scenarios were supported two to one, basically just very favorable response for most of these. And I'll just run through them quickly. Some of them are associated with the activation of the new Toynton Pre-Engineering Academy. So we were trying to limit the impact on individual schools. So in conjunction with activation of new schools, we were also trying to reduce our use of portable classrooms further. So one fun fact is that as a result of our new construction, we reduced our use of portable classrooms for general education purposes by 33%. And then this boundary package that you're looking at reduced that portable usage by an additional 17%. So for the most part, as a result of both the new construction and the boundaries, we've reduced our portable classroom utilization for general education by 50%. Also, as we went along, we tried to address feeder systems, improving the ability of elementary children to go to their next middle school with their cohorts. And we also addressed some pedestrian hazards. This scenario shows some of the changes that we made associated with the activation of Toynton. We picked the larger of the two scenarios for Toynton that identified 700, approximately 700 neighborhood students to attend Toynton. And then a shuttle bus effort where we would bring students in from east and central Greeley via transportation in order to bring the school's enrollment up to its capacity of about 900 students. So we made some changes in Gateway Lakes where we moved students from Meker to Hyman. You're going to see an effort for us to make room in Hyman and Prairie Heights Middle School to accommodate future growth that we expect in the city of Evans. So that was another part of our program. In a lot of these cases, we were moving students around in order to compensate for these 700 students that we were trying to identify to populate the new Toynton building. So we made changes in Maplewood that reflected that. We also were addressing the 10th Street corridor, which is a major pedestrian hazard for the community. And we were trying to address the idea of making a nice clean line down that street. We also will be activating the Madison PK through 8 facility. And we needed to draw a boundary to activate that school. In Franklin, we were pulling students out of Franklin to populate the middle school grade... to populate the middle school grades for the Madison PK through eight. And we did some replacement into Franklin from Heath in order to try to balance the impact on Franklin a little bit. And then we made a few changes with Meeker and Monfort in order to replace students in Monfort that will be attending Toynton. It was students in Meeker from a growing area of multifamily properties straight south of Greeley West High School. These next three slides show that, for the most part, we tried to limit our effects to 40 to 100 students on some of the schools. So what we were trying to do was have everyone make a little bit of a contribution to the boundaries required by the new schools without creating a lot of impact in a handful of locations. So that's the reason why these changes affect a dozen schools instead of just four or five. I'll just quickly scan through these slides. You can see we're moving students from Maplewood to Jackson, about 40 students there. We're moving about 79 students to Martinez in order to balance Maplewood and address the 10th Street corridor. We established the Madison PK through eight boundary with about 470 elementary students. And then we add about 150 Franklin students to populate the middle school boundary, which is basically the area right around Madison. And then we try to backfill into Franklin from Heath in order to balance Franklin back up to around 500 students. This table that you can review at your leisure shows kind of two different takes on enrollment. We have some students that are not in our books or on anybody's books right now as a result of the pandemic. So whether we use 2019 or 2020 enrollment, for the most part, these are the schools that are most affected. And on average, there is about a 100 student effect as we look at the top eight or nine schools that we pulled students out of to populate Toynton. Statewide, about 3% of students have been off the books as a result of the pandemic. We expect the majority of those to come back to us for the fall of '21. There were nominal free and reduced lunch effects. The students in the top half of this table shown in rose and in amber show, for the most part, free and reduced impacts of 1% or 2% with a few exceptions that are not schools that are in the 80s or the 90s anyhow. So we were able to accomplish the majority of this without huge impacts on free and reduced balance among the schools. From a phasing standpoint, as Dr. Pilch mentioned, the Maplewood change will be the first one in the fall of 2021. We'll be implementing these changes over about a 36-month period. McAuliffe will also open in November and will be, it will be open for the start of school. We'll just move out of the portables into the new building in November. For fall of '22, Toynton opens and the linked boundary effects associated with Toynton will become active. And we'll also open Greeley West with no effects on high school boundaries. Finally, in fall of '23, most of the changes associated with the Madison PK through eight school will happen then. So over about a 36-month period, we will have a gradual and very well-thought-out implementation of these new boundaries. Here's a look at our boundary map. You can see we've got pretty much the Monfort area split into Heath and Prairie Heights still. Toynton does not exist. We do not have the Madison PK through eight boundary. And we don't have a defined middle school boundary for Winograd according to this mapping, although 90% of the children that go to Winograd come from Stony Brook and attend that school without being formally in its attendance area. So for fall of 2021, you can see we make the Jackson, Maplewood and Jackson change. So we start to clean these lines up again along major arterial streets. And then we identify a defined middle school boundary, which are shown in these dark blue lines for Winograd. So you can see Winograd gets a boundary for its six through eight population, and that becomes defined. And then in fall of '22, you can see the Toynton boundary, which is shown in gray here. And West Central Greeley kicks in. We have a little bit of an impact on Winograd. And we start looking at some of the Gateway Lakes changes. And we create, kind of start looking at some boundaries where we run very cleanly along major arterial streets. No effect in McAuliffe. The Madison boundary has not occurred yet. And then by fall of 2023, this shows everything being implemented. So we see that there is a Madison PK through eight elementary and a Madison middle school boundary. So the elementary boundaries are in the multicolored rainbow. And then the dark blue lines indicate the middle school boundaries. And then you can see the nice clean line along 10th Street between Martinez and Maplewood and Heath and Franklin. And we get away from moving children back and forth across that busy vehicle corridor. The Toynton boundary, you can see, providing some relief for the Hyman Elementary area and Prairie Heights in order to make room for planned residential growth in the city of Evans. We are offering transportation and grandfathering, transportation, yellow school bus transportation during the first year of deployment. And then families have a right to finish their child's education at the school, at their pre-boundary change school. But after that first year, they would provide their own transportation, both at the elementary and the middle school level. And that's pretty much standard front-range practice for school districts to implement new boundary changes in that manner. So that's my presentation. I'd be delighted to respond to questions, and I'll thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. I know that we got to ask you questions a few weeks ago, or a couple of weeks ago, but there may be some others that board members want to ask.
So President Matthews, while we're waiting for those, I would just add one comment about all of this. I think when we start talking with schools about students leaving their attendance area and going to another attendance area, for schools, that feels like losing students. And none of our principals really want to give up children who are in their school. And so that's the hardest part about where we are, I think, in all of this. Although the purpose was to build a new school, to bring schools closer to capacity and to eliminate portable classrooms, the only way we do that is by having students leave, some students leave their current attendance boundary and go to that new attendance boundary where that new school opens. So, you know, there's some bittersweet here in that our principals wanted to meet with other principals where their students would be moving to their school to know that they wanted those students from their school at the new school. And so I just want to be upfront about that. That is the hardest part of boundary changes, is that there will be some shifts in total enrollment. There will be some shifts in staffing. And there have to be if we're going to eliminate all of those portables and open a new school.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Ms. Pappas?
Well, part of what I was going to say is kind of echoing what Dr. Pilch just said, just that it can be challenging and it is hard to, being a former principal and a former teacher, it's hard to say, "Oh, my students are going to be going to a different school." So I appreciate that information. I also appreciate the work that was done in this, having the stakeholder meetings. I know that many people attended those meetings and gave input. And honestly, it just feels so good to know that this was done in a thoughtful and intentional way. And when I look at that 10th Street, it has been really hard over the past few years when you're driving west on 10th Street to see kids running across 10th Street to try to get to Maplewood. So that's just one example, but I just want to thank you and appreciate your work.
Ms. Solis?
So this is, you know, going on my eighth year as a school board member and just having conversations at CASB and with other school board members, boundary changes makes people cringe. And so it's one of those things that you hope to kick down the line. And yet, in our community right now, for every house that goes on sale, there's like 10 offers. So we know that we're getting more families. We have more children. And we've had the blessing of, you know, a new bond where we're adding to our schools and, you know, putting new schools up. So I think it's really important that we do this work now and that we don't put this off and to really have a plan moving forward that's gradual and really meets the needs as things are being built. So I just want to thank everybody for doing this hard work. I know it's not easy and I know there's a huge impact. But yet, it's really important work and it needs to be done. So just thank you for, everybody for being part of this.
So Ms. Solis, I will tell you too, a lot of times, boundary changes occur because schools are closing, because school districts are in declining enrollment, because young families cannot afford to move into many of those communities or are not choosing to live in those communities if they're in rural Colorado. And so the good news is, we're changing boundaries because we're growing and we continue to grow. So thank you for your comments.
I'm not seeing any additional questions from Mr. Bingham or for you, Dr. Pilch. Again, we got to get a lot of our questions answered two weeks ago. But I would just echo the thanks. We knew that this would happen. When we went out and pitched a bond and we said we wanted to get rid of portables and we want to build a new school, that we knew that this would have to happen. And I know it must be sad for principals to lose students to other schools and for kids that identified with one school now are asked to identify with another. But this is so good and so needed for our community. And I will just echo what Ms. Solis said. Thank you for, and to Mr. Bingham too, for doing this in such a thoughtful and intentioned way.
We should echo President Matthews just for the public. Should there be people watching, that we will, again, continue to provide transportation for one year to the student's previous home school. And then families will have the option to open and roll back to that school once we stop providing transportation for those children and transport their own children if they wish to stay at their current school, once the boundary change is enacted.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Ms. Gray?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Our next item is our legislative updates. And I see Mr. Fawn making his way to the podium. Anything that you need to do as a way of introduction, Dr. Pilch? All right, Mr. Fawn will give it to you.
Thank you, President Matthews, members of the board, Dr. Pilch. Again, my name is Nathan Fawn, legal counsel for the district, and I will be giving you the legislative update for the evening. So if any of you liked my Schoolhouse Rock version of how a bill becomes law under Colorado law last week, today I'm going to briefly do the same thing just because I think this is somewhat important for the purposes of what you're doing as board members. And so, you know, there's this thing called lobbying. Colorado law permits lobbying and they define lobbying as communicating directly or soliciting others to communicate with a covered official for the purposes of aiding in or influencing. And then there's a list of items that a lobbyist can aid or influence. That's bills or other pending proposed writings, fiscal impact statements that often come with bills, convening special sessions to talk with legislatures about these bills, or even drafting amendments to bills or the bills themselves. We do have a lobbyist in the district. Her name is Ann Barkis of Barkis Mendez and Associates. She's a great lobbyist. She's been doing this for a long, long time. And so the board and the district can offer her positions on certain bills. We can do one of four things. We could support or oppose bills, which are pretty straightforward. We can monitor bills. And the vast majority of bills that I introduce to you are bills that we are just simply monitoring. And we can also amend a bill. If there's a bill that we agree to in principle, but there's maybe some language that we'd like to change, we can offer amendments that Ms. Barkis could put forward to perhaps change the bill to better benefit our students. I'm just going to jump right into House bills. There isn't really much to update you on in terms of school finance. The School Finance Act has still not been introduced. I know I mentioned that Mill Levy bill. The interrogatories are in front of the Supreme Court right now. And so it looks like they are waiting to introduce that until they get an answer about the Mill Levy issue. So just to briefly go over some of these bills, 1258 Rapid Mental Health Response for Colorado Youth. This bill has been introduced to the House Committee on Appropriations. And what this bill does, it establishes a temporary youth mental health services program, which could provide up to three mental health sessions to youth that are screened into the program. They would appropriate $9 million from the general fund to the Department of Health and Services to fund this program. And this program is temporary, but it does assist students who are suffering from mental health impacts, especially as they relate to COVID-19 and the pandemic. I know that some of the board members have been looking towards increasing access to mental health services for our students. And including some of the student council representatives have come forward about this. I think it's a really great bill despite the fiscal impact that it might have. My recommendation is that the board would support this bill. Again, we are just monitoring this bill at this time, but that is the recommendation that I give to you. Under 1103 Media Literacy Implementation, I know we talked about this one as well. This one has passed through the third reading of the House. It was introduced to the Senate Committee of the whole last week. And just to briefly go over this, this bill would require the State Board of Education to revise the academic content standards for reading, writing, and civics to include media literacy. And this is really just to address the rapid and widespread dissemination of misinformation. And it's to equip students with critical thinking skills to analyze information that comes in front of them. I certainly could have benefited from this as a young adult. And I know a lot of our students could certainly benefit from a bill that increases their knowledge of media, at least as it pertains to the internet. Again, that's why it was my recommendation that the district supports this bill. Under 1221 Bullying Prevention and Education in Schools, this bill has been referred to the House Committee of the whole last week. And just some background on this bill, it updates the requirements for the Colorado Department of Education's Model Bullying Prevention and Educational Policy and requires school districts to incorporate this policy in their discipline code. The bill would also allow public school districts to suspend or expel students for bullying. The updated policy must, at a minimum, clearly differentiate between conflict and bullying as well as harassment and bullying. And it must also clarify the role of cyberbullying during online instruction. So the impact that this would have on our district is that we would have to update our conduct and discipline codes to align to that model policy. It would also increase some workload because there are some reporting requirements under this bill. And while I certainly support any additional provisions or some kind of statewide policy addressing bullying, as far as the reporting requirements, that's unclear. And that could be a heavy administrative burden on the district in terms of reporting. That's why I suggest that the district continues to monitor this bill. Under House Bill 1200 Revised Student Financial Literacy Standards, this bill has passed the House on its second reading. It's been amended. Just some background here, this bill would require the State Board of Education to ensure that the ninth through 12th grade financial literacy standards include costs associated with obtaining a post-secondary degree or credential as well as common methods for saving for retirement, managing credit card debt, and home ownership. Again, I think this bill could really benefit a lot of our students in terms of being more ready once they have graduated in terms of their financial literacy. This would probably put a little bit more on Dr. Dattery's plate in terms of updating our curriculum for financial literacy. But I recommend that the board supports this bill because I think it's important that students have this information. The district would also be required to provide information regarding FAFSA for students who do want to attend college and to provide resources to those students. Under House Bill 1010 Diverse Educator Workforce Report, this bill requires the Department of Education to convene a work group to investigate barriers to the preparation, recruitment, and retention of a diverse educator workforce. This bill really determines which educator preparation programs gives candidates the best opportunity to succeed at becoming an educator. This bill identifies that one of the primary reasons that we don't have a more diverse educator workforce is because of licensing. So this bill really emphasizes first-time test takers to get their educator licenses. You know, I think that given the I-2030 plan and the previous I- You know, I think that given the I-2030 Plan and the previous I-2020 Plan, the district would really certainly prefer to have a workforce that is more representative of the Greeley-Evans community, which is why I recommend that the district supports this bill. Because really, this is just going to be information gathering on how we can best recruit and retain a diverse educated workforce. House Bill 1273 Colorado Department of Education Report Concerning School Psychologists. This bill's interesting because it really is just a numbers counting, so you would count the number of pupils enrolled in your district, and you would count the number of full-time psychologists who are employed by the school, which is a great opportunity for us to identify which districts have a shortcoming in terms of school psychologists. The only reason that I recommend the district continues to monitor this bill is it could really put us kind of under a microscope. This could create unrealistic expectations for what some school districts have and what some school districts don't. Obviously, we would like to have as many school psychologists as possible, we just might not have the financial resources available to do so. And so I just caution that that is where this bill might take us. Right now, it's only in the House Appropriations Committee, it hasn't gone into the House Committee of the Whole, so we should just continue to monitor this bill. And last, House Bill 1059, this bill has been referred to the Senate Committee, it passed the House Committee. This bill's been heavily, heavily amended, and it addresses certain protections for behaviors that occur during the remote learning environment. This bill specifically would restrict school districts, or prohibit school districts from restricting the presence of a parent during online instruction unless that parent continues to disrupt the class. It would also prohibit school districts from requiring that a student use a camera to provide a live image during online instruction if the student's technology does not allow for use of a camera. Like I said, this bill's been really heavily amended. Originally, it just kind of outright permitted parents to attend online learning classes at their leisure. It also prohibited school districts from suspending or expelling students based on maybe items that are in, on display in the back of their bedroom. But now this bill includes provisions that schools could still suspend or expel students based on our own policies. I've looked into this, a lot of school districts across the state are opposing this bill, and it's my recommendation that we oppose this bill because we are introducing the District Six Online Academy next year, and this could really put significant prohibitions on what the district can do in terms of disciplining students for certain behaviors. And last, I just have three Senate bills to go over with you. 236 Increasing Capacity for Early Childhood Education. This bill would create four new grant programs to increase capacity for early childhood care and education. It'd also improve recruitment and retention rates for early childhood educators, and it would improve salaries for early childhood educators. Specifically, there's four programs. One is the Employer-Based Childcare Facility Grant Program. The second, the Early Child, the Early Care and Education Recruitment and Retention Grant and Scholarship Program. Third, the Childcare Teacher Salary Grant Program. And fourth, the Community Innovation and Resilience for Care and Learning Equity Grant Program, also known as CIRCLE. You know, I, I think specifically that first bill is a great opportunity to provide childcare centers for our educators, and our young educators especially, so they can come to work. This would help with retention and recruitment because there would be an opportunity to place their children at one of these childcare centers. You know, the issue is this does take a significant impact on, in terms of fiscally. It would require an $8 million appropriation this year, and a $21 million appropriation for the 2022, 2023 school year. And we also don't know exactly how much impact this will have on our district specifically. This is for all employers, this isn't just for school employers, and so I just recommend that the district continue to monitor this bill. Briefly on Audiology and Interstate Speech Language Pathology Compact, this bill did pass through the Senate, it's now assigned to the House Finance Committee. This would create that interstate compact to allow audiologists and speech language pathologists licensed in other states to provide services under a privileged practice and to provide telehealth services. The district already is supporting this bill. Right now, it's just kind of setting the stage for that interstate compact, and so we don't really know where it'll take us next year, but I think it'd be great to have these services available for our students who might not be able to get them in our district. Last, reversing COVID-19-related learning loss. This is SB 13. This House has been referred to the House Committee of the Whole. And this, under this bill, the Colorado Department of Education would create a resource bank of educational products, strategies, and services to address learning loss. And that information would then be provided to school districts. Schools can also provide information to the Colorado Department of Education about what programs work best for our students, and so they can kind of update this bank. This could certainly benefit our students. And right now, we are monitoring this bill, and I recommend that we just continue to monitor this bill. Last, there was a bill that I didn't include, and I should have, and that's House Bill 1294 Education Accountability Systems Performance Audit. That audit bill was introduced last week, and that's to hire a public or private contractor to do an audit of our statewide assessment system. So we'll be monitoring that. And with that, I'll invite you to share any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Fall. I think you might have some questions, and you do. And Ms. Pappas?
Oh, not a question, but thank you so much for bringing this to us. I, I, I just appreciate the way that you presented, and it's nice to have the information repeated so that we can really understand what these bills are, so just thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Tally?
Like Ms. Pappas said, thank you for all the information and making it simple for us to understand instead of the probably 700-page document that they probably want to show us. I do have some questions around some of the, I'm trying to think of which one I'm thinking of, sort of like the media literacy implementation, the financial literacy standards, those ones. I just have a fear, I think it's great that they want to implement these and, and put these, a blanket for statewide, this is what we should be teaching, but I also, it's kind of like, what is, what is overreach? And are you overreaching and telling us what we have to teach, how we have to teach it, which is, I guess Colorado Department of Education does that a little bit already, and we need it, but I just worry if we get too much into the weeds, if that could backfire on us somewhere down the road, and that's my only fear with those ones that we have support. In terms of the bullying prevention education in schools, that made me nervous when you mentioned expelling students based off of bullying. I come from a restorative justice lens, and I worry, what are we teaching students if we're just going to expel them when they bully? Bullying's not good, I'm not, definitely not encouraging it, or whatever, but I just, how are we going to make things right, make sure that these students that maybe don't have the best supports in our lives, and maybe what they lean towards is bullying, and then they, they aren't given a chance in our schools? And I know that we give them a chance here, and that we definitely give them as much support as we can, but that is a fear that I have, is expelling a student based off of bullying. So yeah, and thank you for, for your proposing to oppose the online student protections. I think that was not a, not a very good bill, and I think that that is very harmful, and definitely tries to put government in our homes a little bit more than, than we need, so thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I can certainly, maybe at this week's EWeek, can update you on kind of the parameters about bullying and what that would mean in terms of suspensions and expulsions, as well as the literacy banks of what they're kind of looking to include in those, just if you're curious to learn more.
Of course, thank you so much.
Ms. Mueller?
So I have a couple of questions. One, when you're suggesting that the district supports certain bills, what does that look like from us to support it? Is it just that we're in favor of it, or are we sending some sort of formal letter of support?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I would share that information with Ms. Barkis, and then she would just take a position with the prime sponsors of the bill generally, or at committee, and would just have District Six being, you know, an entity that supports or opposes the bill. If we really want to take a hard stance, I would let her know that, and we could, and I would work with her on reasons as to why we support or oppose a bill, and she would really work with legislatures on ensuring that our needs are met in a situation like that.
Okay. And if I may, Ms. Mueller, I'll add a little bit more to that. When we feel strongly about, I mean, really strongly about opposing or supporting a bill, as was the case here with some legislation earlier this session where we were strongly opposing it, in that case, then I'm also kind of, not kind of, I'm also working directly with Ms. Barkis, as well as the case lobbyist, and they're advising me on who else I should reach out to, who else I might want to have a conversation with to influence that legislation. And then they may also ask for us, any, some of us, any of us, to come and testify or provide virtual testimony or written emails, should they feel that that would make a difference, depending on, you know, who the sponsors of the bill are and, and which committee the bill is sitting in.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I have another question. Whenever I see policy, what I'm most concerned with, and kind of echoing Mr. Tally's concern, is unintended consequences, especially if it's going to involve unfunded mandates or, or something that changes the way we do curriculum, but we have to pay for it. And so, do, does Mrs. Barkis get into the weeds a little bit about what might come of it as unintended consequences?
Yeah, absolutely, and she, she's really good at catching that when I, when I can. And so we meet every other week, and she shares with me kind of what the unintended consequences might be. A lot of it really has to do with the fiscal impact, and where that money's being taken out to, you know, have this bill become law and have it go be effective, so, but yeah, for the most part, that is something that she is great at identifying.
Okay, fantastic. There's two bills that I think are actually related that are interestingly not connected, which is the Rapid Mental Health Response, tied also to the, the school psychologist. Interestingly, we have the Audiologies, a compact state, which is super important because we don't have enough audiologists at all in the world, but we also don't have enough school psychologists. So it's just sort of interesting to me that we have a bill that's coming up on this Rapid Mental Health Response, which I'm absolutely in support of, but if we don't have the personnel to make sure that happens, you know, is there a bill moving forward to, to address also some compact state agreements for having school psychologists from other states? The problem is licensing, I know, but that's something that I think is, is super important for our students' mental health and well-being, so I'd be interested to see how those progress, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll continue to monitor them and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? I'm not seeing any, Mr. Fall, so thank you again for your work, thank you for these presentations, they're very helpful for us.
Yeah, thank you, President Matthews. And I just want to clarify one thing, that the positions that I included on the slides are really just my recommendation, other than the, the Interstate Compact, that's the only bill we've taken a position on, so just to clarify that, but thank you all.
Thank you. Our next item is Public Participation Regarding Non-agenda Items, and I don't believe we have anybody here to, to speak to us tonight, and so that is all that we have tonight. Thanks for joining us, and this meeting is adjourned.